Down, then they can't come back.
You're good.
They reduce it, right?
Well, to order the planning commission meeting for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We can call the roll. Very good. Everyone in front of them should have a copy of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded by Gardner. Voice vote. All those in favor say. Posed. Agenda has been approved. Approval of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes that were in the packet from the regular meeting December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two? Was there any comments in regards to those minutes? And by the way, I think you did a very good job in putting it together and summarize. That was a very lengthy meeting. And you really did just kind of bring it right down to the the most important parts. If that's. There's no comments and take a motion to approve December fifteenth. Support. All those in favor? Posed. Aries, the special meeting minutes from December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Any comments? None. Seeing none. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes. I.
Posed. Moving us on to public comments. Anyone that's here in the room? Or that's online that would like to speak? In regards to anything that's on the current agenda. So the agenda items only. Uh, if you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in the room, you can just feel free to come up and to the microphone. State your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kimball, five fifty Spear Street. Um, and. Actually have a little bit of a question about the procedure, if I may ask. I had a uh, comment about the seven hundred North Maple lot split. But frankly, I I read a lot of the material that was published in advance and I'm not totally clear on what it, what it all is. So. Is it appropriate to comment now or um, after you have the discussion on that item?
It would probably be best to have the comment now, although we may answer some of the questions during our our discussion. And then there is one more public comment section at the very end, but by then we would have already.
You'd have already made your, okay, so my my comment is that that property is adjacent to uh, the Peterson Nature Preserve. And um, so. I'm, you know, I'm totally supportive of doing whatever is legal to, you know, when for property owners who only, you know, already own a property, they can certainly do whatever is legal to do. I wasn't clear if this uh, adding this road or. Whatever, splitting this property to, you know, i- if that's totally within the code that's existing. And I would only say that if it's not, I wouldn't be in support of giving it a special variance. Just because it is adjacent to the nature preserve, you know, we want to limit development there if we can. But obviously, you know, not if it's not within, I mean, I'm totally supportive of. Personal property rights, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear that that's. You know, that that's a natural looking area now, and you know, if we split it and encourage development, it would just look um, not as appealing as it currently does.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Any other public comments? We have a hand up from like uh, Kelsey Anderson.
Heather, good evening to everyone. I'm uh, I'm not exactly sure if this is the appropriate time for for this discussion, but um. I'm here representing the Anderson Trust and uh, my sister Ashley Anderson and David Anderson, who's there in front of you um, regarding the lot split. And just want to thank the planning commission for their time reviewing this and Ryan's time and pulling everything together um. To answer the other lady's question real quick. The intention is not to develop that lot um, into multiple houses. It has more to do with. Actually removing the current home and building a new home in that same location. Um. And again, a question for you. I have a few more other comments, but if there's further discussion later, if that's more appropriate, then I'll hold my comments till then.
We appreciate it, Kelsey. You have maybe we'll call on you or you already have the representative in the room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public comments and move on to old business. Underneath the old business, we just had the public signage. Uh, that we discussed last time, and Ryan, you probably want to give us a verbal update, it looks like.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, real quick, I want to hold up a sign and then I'll give you an update. But uh. The last meeting, we discussed uh. Public hearing signage, uh, so we've uh, put together a design and and had them uh. Uh, created. Uh, in fact, we used them for uh, ten forty-four Holland Streets, uh, that, you know. As you'll discuss with through their application, but we did have this outside of that property. Um, we've actually had uh, uh, Lake Town Township actually already called and was like, hey, we saw the signage out there. We like that. You know, what did you do? How'd that come about? And so I kind of explained that uh, to them as well, and I've heard some other. Uh, positive feedback. So hopefully that uh, met your intents, uh, what you were looking for and uh. Uh, we'll, we'll be using these for uh, ZBA uh, public hearings as well as your uh, planning commission public hearings.
I think it's great. It looks really good.
Yeah.
So if somebody scans that QR code, it takes them to the city of Saba Top website.
Yep.
Well done.
And it works from a standing position. I've tested it, so. I know it's at the bottom. I was like, yeah, where do we want to put it on there? But it does work if you're standing, so. That's really.
Perfect. Thank you. And I even want to say can. Thank you to Russ. I think it was last year. That you brought up the idea of having a little more notification and so. Stay in it, keep it on the agenda and you following through.
Better done.
Thank you. Looks very good. Looks very good. QR code CJ. I love that.
Saves a phone call, so.
There you go. Works out well. Well, that's all I had for old business. Moving on to new business, I mean, it's item A. Applicant for seven hundred North Maple, a lot split. Before we open it up to the applicant, Brian, why don't you take a few minutes and just kind of walk us through?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Yeah, and right off the bat, I want to kind of clarify, um, you know, essentially what what. Land Division Act and and uh. How can see attorney's offices here and can answer any of your questions uh, tonight uh, as well, um, beyond just me. Um, Blaine Division Act essentially gives me as the zoning administrator, the authority to ultimately make the decision on the land division. Um, so we're essentially bringing this to you tonight just kind of for some uh, input and feedback. There's no formal action that's needed on from the planning commission. Uh, on this particular application. And the reason why I think we're bringing it to you, it really is for a couple of reasons. One, back in two thousand four, there was a very similar, uh, there was a split that occurred at seven twenty North Maple. If you can pull up that uh. Document. Seven twenty North Maple and a very similar discussion occurred with the the planning commission at that time about. This drive and whether or not it met private road standards. Uh, and whether or not there was really adequate um, uh, utilities and infrastructure back there um, that to service uh, the area. Uh, so staff at that time saw it, planning commission feedback. We have a very similar circumstance at this time, so we wanted to bring this to you uh, for, you know. Further review and 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 uh, feedback. Um, the other piece, when you look at it from its overall planning perspective, we see a number of um, lots that are undeveloped uh, that that could be. Um, a- at any point in time and, you know, do we have um. Uh, the capital improvements that that are necessary depending on what we're necessarily looking for in this part of the city. So um. So I I I raise those two items just to kind of let you know why it's before you. Um, normally land divisions don't come before the the planning commission. And really what staff is kind of wrestled with uh, in reviewing these, these application materials uh, really for quite some time now and having a number of discussions with the applicant. Is um, do we have a situation here where we have a um, a flag lots that's trying to um, you know, split off uh, uh, more of its property? Um, and have more parcels accessing the actual. Whole section of the flag that that accesses the the public road, which isn't allowable by his running ordinance? Or do we actually have a situation here where that drive is actually? A private drive and private road meets those standards where in that case, if you have a private drive, um, multiple parcels could be created. Um, and it as long and have access to it. And so. That's what we're kind of asking for feedback from the planning commission on tonight. Uh, is this an attempt to further divide a flag lot? Or is the proposed lot fronting an existing private street, avoiding thus avoiding the issue? Another piece that that we think is important to get some feedback on is, you know, is the existing shared gravel drive considered a a private street? You know, the zoning ordinance is not very clear on um, maybe what those standards should be for a private road. Um, certainly there's some mention of, you know, having proper access for fire servicing. Um, the fire department has provided some feedback to the applicant. Uh, as well as staff kind of indicating what those requirements would be for them and and what's there now doesn't quite meet their standards. And there would need to be some improvements made to make sure that it met the fire code, which I think the applicant's aware of and and indicated on their documents, they would make sure that it's improved to the the point that it needs to be for them. Um, and then we would certainly, you know, staff was a bit important at the city engineer to take a look at it to make sure that there's no concerns from that perspective as well. So. I'm happy to to answer any questions that you may have. Um, we did pull up kind of a a larger GIS map to kind of show you the bigger picture here. Beyond that, what's this in your packet? Cause you can kind of see the question and why the question's being raised.
Right, and I did have one question. Or at least a point, the way I understand this. Because when I'm reading through, they are talking about the potential for nine lots accessible as private. So back in two thousand four, seven twenty. Did a lot division of into four properties. That's what we're kind of seeing is outlined there.
Yep.
Of four. Divisions. And then we have the three. That are on kind of what I kind of call the south. And west end of it. And then if we had another lot split, that'd be nine total.
Correct. Correct. And then that the property at six ten North Maples actually, you know, reached out to me and that they have, you know, some interest in maybe. You know, splitting off the rear of their their property and wanting to know whether or not they could use this drive as access as well. Um, uh, for that particular parcel, so. Sorry, I don't have uh.
Oh, so they would want to have access to that, whatever that is, the easement or private road also. Okay.
Yeah, cause there's two roads.
Oh, that's. Dividing line is there? Is the separation between?
There's an easement, I think, for utilities between the two, it's a dirt road.
Yeah, the the easement covered is on the majority of of um, seven hundred North Maples property, but then does, yes. Um, a portion of it's on the southern parcel there as well.
So those three that are really on the southern end that are underneath six something. They would be accessed through their own easement on the south side. I see it now. Okay. Got it. Really not nine. Anyone have questions for Russ? Or do you want to go ahead and have the applicant speak first?
Let me just, so by not using that bottom easements, how many properties would be a part of this drives, this current driveway? If they split it?
Six. If you allowed a lot split of seven hundred. Now, seven twenty has already been approved for up.
Okay.
And.
And and do I understand correctly that you're not asking?
For for seven twenty, yes, I'm sorry.
If we, if the lot split was allowed for back here in the seven hundred.
Four.
Or one, two.
One, two, right. So I'd be a six total versus I was looking at the three that are down below.
Yep.
Thinking that they were on the same, but that's he's saying that's a separate easement on the south side. Which would be the north side of that property, but south of the. Easement for the southern part.
There's actually two tracks, two, two tracks that go back there. Uh, the one that's a little more well-developed, exciting, the one we're talking about to the north and then there's.
Yeah, I viewed him as one.
I'm sorry?
I viewed, I thought it was all one.
Um, the question I had, so you're not asking us to take any formal action?
Correct.
None is required?
Correct.
Under, under the statute you cited? Okay, great.
And and Brian, ultimately, you make the decision, you and city staff.
Correct.
In the day.
Yep. Just asking for some input and feedback, some more to. Prior to. Because prior discussions have occurred by the planning commission back in two thousand four and looking at the overall development pattern in this area.
The applicant like to address this.
He could come to the. We need you at the the podium, sir. Yeah.
Evening.
Evening.
Yeah, Davey Anderson and um, so I have, I'm acting as a substitute trustee. For the kids.
Indeed. So then you basically, your understanding is that they want to split it?
Yeah.
Take the home down.
There's a house that's in this area here, and my daughter wants to um. Basically raise it and um, replace it on its own footprint. I'm gonna just do it. And if they get for her to get alone, she needs to hold this part of the trust. For construction. If they want to develop two lots. They have to come back and you got to do that because um, the water service, the utility. Our meters, the buffalo box down there, so we ran. And we we ran our own rain back. If they want to develop those, there's, there's, that's up to them to provide their own water service. They have to put their own main.
So there is a main just back to. A private main. So if, and that could handle two properties, if you ever developed it. But I meant if if that was split. And someday somebody built on the other parcel. Then your water line would be sufficient for both?
Actually, way the, way the trust is, the only thing that would be developed there is with the uh. Century development to be.
Oh.
That's all. And and that's always, that was always the point. I was going to end up with a small accessory. What, what that zoning was done maybe three years ago? That's perfect. Six hundred square foot with the kids.
Okay.
Anyway, but she just wants to get going. She wants to start cleaning up. And the other question I had too was um. Yes. Through our survey, the machine would like to actually. And so this way was originally written, we would have to tear that down. And he thought, well, why can't we do a uh, a boundary adjustment? Or rather than, rather than doing that now, we'd rather just give you a revised survey. So your decision is that.
Right, so I mean, tonight we're just asking for the planning commission to provide some feedback, and I think the primary. Items we're looking for them to weigh in on is, you know, our. The flag lot issue or the private drive issue. So I don't think that would impact if you chose to. Um, withdraw your your current submittal and submit a new parcel division, um, you know, for consideration. Cause I think that the questions would still be the same on that. The question would still be the same depending on, I I assume you would, yeah, if you're coming up with a different configuration there, you still think we'd run into the same questions, so. Yeah, so that that would be kind of a separate. You want to withdraw what you've submitted to us and redraw the lines, you know, kind of a new application for us to consider, but I think. At that point, then we would have had already talked with the planning commission to get some feedbacks. I don't.
That, that was our discussion last night was that um. Well, let's, let's see what objections are between the rest of the board. We, if there's any serious issues, then. Maybe we'll just withdraw the. The lot split altogether and. Ashley can just borrow money on the whole parcel and move along.
Fair enough.
The part that concerns me the most about this is, is, you know, first and foremost, I'm going to. As planning commissioner, I want to make sure that we try to accommodate, you know, specific needs for, you know, situations such as trust and so forth. However. Thinking forward, um, even though there's no intent to develop that flag lot, if it could even be developed. Um, if you want to put this into a position where it doesn't constrain you if you choose to, you know, and that would have to be something to be brought back to the planning commission or for appropriate variances. But. With this lot division that I'm seeing on the on the application, flag lot that's going to be created, the two questions I have, one is. Utility access, which you talked about, with no utility run through there. So you've got two. Properties that are going to be impacted. If they ever choose to develop that, we'd have to run something off Maple Street. That's going to be this. That's going to be a little coin there for that to do that. And then plus, you would have to maybe address the flag lot issue. And then two is that the actual flag lot itself, flag lots are 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 kind of a neat thing. Um, because of the actual hole itself, creates an access issue that was brought up in the report too is that. Um. Because that's a private road. How does that enter the equation here in terms of? Do you understand what I'm going with this? How does that actually impact the ability of you to use the property going forward? You know, would it be able to be buildable lot? In other words, with utility and with the private road access. So I'm just asking generally, that's kind of my concern. It's more not out of. Wanting to hold anything back, but just want to make sure that we make a good decision that supports. What Ashley's going to do to applicant. I want they, you know, who knows what it's gonna. Know that baby's.
I think we should have him get back up to the mic. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah, you bet. The the rationale is uh. That was always family property. That's why the irrevocable trust was never meant to be subdivided. Except Ashley needed to get her loan, and so here we are. Um. Am I answering the question?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any, you know, from my perspective, speaking as an individual commissioner, I don't see any issues with the the application. Uh, but I do want to make sure that, you know, we're thoughtful about the two issues of environmental. And 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 the private street to a good part in the.
Correct.
Well, well, what? What, the way, the way the auxiliary dwelling was written. Everything there has to run off of one meter anyway. And that's the way it will be. And that's the way it is and that's the way it will be. Um, so the utility issue, I think, is somewhat mute.
But it would be beneficial. Where I kind of see it is. If you did draw it to where the auxiliary building is actually in the lot where the house is going to be. Because I know like in current notes, it talks about you building the house and then. Building something else, I thought, on the lot that had the existing building on it. Within one year. Um, you know, so, cause you can't have an existing building on a parcel without having a a primary.
Uh, yes, exactly. That's why we were talking about re- just redoing the survey to include that, then that, then that wouldn't be an issue. But then on the other hand. If we just didn't subdivide it at all, that might be the best solution.
If she can get the loan that way.
Well, yeah, that's a.
I think that would be the easiest solution. If you never plan on developing any more than just that one home, would be then why bother splitting it? Because then you get into a situation like the Rodriguezes have, where they've got one home, but they technically have the potential for four different. Uh, developments, which we have to kind of look at and say, how does that affect the utilities and the private road access? Uh, so if it's all one parcel, then it just, it stays basically the way it is.
It's. We're mutually exclusive to Rodriguezes.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying that. It just eliminates, like, right now you have to evaluate it that it's potential on four plus or two.
And I guess I wouldn't say like for utility purposes that they're mutually exclusive. I mean, to service that area with proper water, I mean, our city, city engineer took a look at it and, you know. Leaves, you know, certainly a water main would need to be run down there. The fire department, once they saw the bigger picture, it's like, yeah, we probably should have some water access back there. Um, and then I don't know if you guys are on septic right now, um, but you know, is right, there is a large um. Sewer main that's running through the easement. Um, but you said connecting to that type of uh, main. From an engineering perspective, wouldn't be um, recommended that they would actually have to have a separate, you know, gravity main that.
Let me clarify that. Uh, that's a, a, the force main. From, from downtown. That goes up, and then there's the affluent that goes back. So there's actually two mains that run through that easement.
Okay.
And um, so actually. That is the, that is the ease that we we granted them an easement, or we bought that grant when we bought the property. And um. That, uh, you can't tie into that. No, that's got nothing to do with anything. All the, what that has to do with, actually, if we were to to do any kind of development. We have to stay uh. We have to stay away from that. In other words, we can't put any permanent. Excuse me.
There could be no permanent structures along with.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a problem with the force main or the affluent line. So this, this part here.
Right, no, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think you're, we're saying the same thing. Um.
Yeah.
Except for the fact that, I mean, you would need a separate water and sewer main to be. Uh, the city engineer would be recommending those types of utilities be run back there to serve, to potentially serve all of these parcels if they were redeveloped. So. And that was the recommendation essentially that was made, I think, you know, back in two thousand four as well that.
If, if, if there was any increase in density. Seven twenty. They would have to do that. The, the destiny here, seven hundred is going to stay like this.
It's from a land division perspective. I mean, my response was to say, okay, this. When they divide it, are the two lots that they're creating, are they buildable? For our zoning ordinance today doesn't guarantee that there's the proper utilities and access, and those are are also separate conversations when you're going to actually develop, you know. Uh, develop the land. Um, so I I understand what you're saying, that you don't have plans to. Do something on the, wouldn't have plans to do something on the other parcel. And I I guess I do want to clarify though. So when you say you're looking to add an accessory dwelling, you know, are you talking about on the same lot that that Ashley would be building her home on?
It, yeah, it has to be um, a percentage of Ashley's home. You know, there's this, I, I don't remember.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure that that you understood, accessory dwelling unit would have to be on her lot. It couldn't be on the separate split off lot on on its own, so.
You know what's it, Russ? What's interesting is um, you're thinking in the longer term than I am. In other words, you're think, you're, you're an advocate for the kids more than I. Yeah, so.
And for the planning commission, that's what Russ is saying too. That's what we have to kind of look at. Is we know that it's an irrevocable family trust and you just want to leave it that way, but then if it changed down the road and we had two lots, we have to think about, well. What if they were both were built, built upon, just like the four lots at the Rodriguezes house?
Yeah, and to that point, one thought I had. Not knowing if this is at all feasible, is down the line, it seems like that development were to happen, it would make sense for. For that road to be. A public road. Now, I don't know the legality of that and how that works. Um, but, but that seemed to me. Perhaps a simple solution down the line. I know there's even mention of a cul-de-sac, um, city engineer recommended even a cul-de-sac at the end there, so it was getting a bit detailed.
Well, but there's a lot of communities that have the private roads, and they do require, if you have more than six. You have to have a. And so it's, so that wouldn't be that uncommon, but they would have to be a private road that is actually maintained by the owners. Whether it's through an HOA or through just mutual agreements. But I think the one thing that, in my opinion, fire, the fire commissioner mentioned or the. Fire department is that would need, the road needs to be able to support, you know, like an eighty thousand dollar, eighty thousand pound. Vehicle and that a sand or dirt road probably is not acceptable, you know, for for that, even given you're having one home back there.
It, it is interesting too that the um. When they did the grade work from the, for the force main. Um, we'd have to have a soil mechanic, the soil mechanics done, but there was a lot, there's a lot of work. And worked and compacted after the force line went in. So there's never been. But we drive back there all the time. But is it, but true enough where Ashley wants to put the turnaround for the. But is it, but true enough where Ashley wants to put the turnaround for the fire truck, and that was all worked out with Nederbilt. And if we need to do dirt work, they accommodate, um, our fire district well. Why? Yes. Yeah, there's no, it's our property we're protecting.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and these would all be things that I would think, at least in my opinion, that if you're getting the approval from, you know, the fire department, that it's adequate. Yeah, I don't, indeed, if it's for it to be a private street, I believe it has to kind of meet at least some of the standards of a private street as far as being passable.
Yeah, and, and going further south and in this area, there was second two subdivisions, I think, down that way anyway.
Yep.
Probably Anderson, I think there's two of them. Those are private roads, but those roads were improved as a result of that subdivision.
Correct, the Singapore.
Yeah, so that would be kind of a vision for this road too. And, Mr. Anderson, the more that I look at this, I understand that Ashley needs to do this for alone. But boy, if that wasn't on the table, I'd say leave things as they are.
You know.
And I can't recommend anything, but I can just say, if I, I would just say. That wasn't the issue.
Look, look at it, being an advocate for the kids that you are. There's grandkids involved too, and they all have interest in stripes. And so we went with, went back to, you know, Dolman, the kind of, I'm a Dolman about. Now, how does this work? And it got so complicated with, with two pieces of property, how it gets divided up when I die and when Kelsey dies. Now what happens? It got really complicated with the split, so.
You could keep, I mean, to Russ's point, I think we'd all probably, even Russ, it all stayed in one, especially while you're doing the construction, if you could get the loan. You know, then you could build the house, and then if you determine after it was over that the children or the grandkids wanted to start to look at, can they do a division? Well, at that point, maybe it may make more sense, at least the home has been built. But again, we're not giving, we can't give advice.
No, no, and you know, in another fifteen or twenty years from now, who, who knows? Back, you know, who, who, who knows that the zoning is going to change and so I could, as far as that's concerned.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I mean, Kelsey was trying to.
Just want to touch base a couple of things, Dad, for, for everything. And, um. So just to kind of touch base with the private road, you know, certainly Ashley and I have talked about whether there's a, a maintenance agreement and a maintenance agreement with Rodriguezes or something like that. If there was a maintenance agreement in place, um, does that, does that satisfy a lot of the private road requirements? I know the private road has a pretty short and broad definition, um, but as far as, you know, certainly, you know. In accordance with the fire department and, and the engineer, if it was, if there was a maintenance agreement in place, does that solve the flag lot issue to some degree?
Thank you, Russ. Russ, I mean, Ryan.
Yeah, I mean, from a staff perspective, I think, planning commission feel, well, the planning commission's feedback, and I think from the staff perspective, I, I could, I understand, I can under. Agree to this, that, you know, if it meets the, the fire authorities' standards, um, city engineers, you know, good with, with, with the setup, and they have a maintenance agreement in place that that would, you know. Be sufficient to say that it's probably meets the standards for a private street based on the ambiguity that we have in our zoning ordinance related to standards beyond that. What's there now, I don't, it doesn't meet that standard. They would have to bring it up to that standard.
Sure, absolutely. No, absolutely. So, um, so that, I think that's the, that's the biggest thing as far as, you know, utilities go and all that kind of stuff. Um, yeah, I think the fact that it stays is on one meter and stays on one meter kind of satisfies that. Just as a, as a further comment, uh, just so everybody's aware, Ashley and I have looked deeply into whether or not to split it or to put it all under her name and build a house. And, and, um, at this point, the split is, I think, um, the best way forward for, for us. Um, if it doesn't work for some reason, not swinging, I think it's certainly an option, but, uh, but we, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best way to do this for everybody. And, and I think as of now, the split, I, I think a split with a property, with a adjustment to keeping the, um, the auxiliary dwelling or the, the barn and the. On the same lot as the house is certainly, um, a good idea and important to, an important piece. So, um, other than that, I don't, I don't really have any further comments than that, but, um, but I did, I did have one question in the beginning that. That you answered, whether or not, if there was a decision from the planning commission, whether or not that was like a final decision or not, but it sounds like that decision still comes back to you, Ryan, uh, down the road. So, um, yeah, I think that's all I have, that's all I have to say.
Very good. We appreciate both of you being here. Russ, you.
I, I would just say that I just want to thank the Andersons for their thoughtfulness. I think this, this is exactly why the planning committee was here, and, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into the application and the presentation materials. Thank you. It's a beautiful piece of property. I've walked in a number of times over the years. And, um, yeah, it's a, you have a, you have a beautiful spot. I would go to the page four of the, uh, planning control, zoning administrator's report. Uh, recommendation is our opinion that the land division could be approved if the dirt service within the. Is upgraded to meet applicable fire codes and recommendations applied by the city engineer. In our opinion, compliance with those requirements and the establishment of a maintenance agreement for those, for those parties, even in the speech, should be conditions of approval. That would be enforced prior to building permitting or occupancy of the dwelling. So. From my perspective, what that does is that the planning commission doesn't necessarily have any decision here. However, the zoning administrator, the city engineer have responsibility to work with the property owners and the land division to prove that it is still standing.
That's exactly how I felt. Agreed. What I was moving to was the recommendation.
All right, I think we've gotten feedback that we were looking for, so, thank you very much.
Appreciate the Andersons being here. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your projects. Item two on a new business, the ten forty-four Holland Street has been, uh, pulled, so that will. Not be an item for us to review this evening. Moving on then to item three, the review of the short-term rental data and discussion. We're holding a, either a joint session or moving forward with resolution to city council. I know Ryan has got some data that was prepared, and. You want to walk through that and bring it up, Ryan, and then. These discussion items also.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, at your last meeting, you asked staff to kind of pull together some short-term rental data and, uh, come back with some recommendations on the formation of an ad hoc committee and, uh, potential timeline. Um, Steph, uh, took a look at the, uh, or I took a look at the, uh, the data that was available through our, um, our software system that we use to kind of track all of our permitting and certificates. And then I also kind of took a look at some of the data that we have available from our assessing system to kind of pull how many total parcels we have in the city. How many parcels have just a residential, residential condominium classification, um, with the caveat that some short-term rentals are maybe in mixed-use buildings. Um, so, um, but does it kind of give you a sense of how many like solely residential assessed parcels we have? And what our system showed is that, um, I'm going to increase this number a little bit on the fly tonight, so we had four that were, that have approved within the last couple of days. You have two, two hundred and seventeen totals shorter certified short-term rental units.
Does that move the number of, uh, ones that were in potential category? Does it take four out?
Correct, yes. Right. Yep, yep, exactly. Um, I also provided you with, uh, in your packet, kind of a, a breakdown of, of how many certified short-term rental units, uh, there are in each particular zoning district, and then how many whole parcels are in those zoning districts. Um, I took the data and, uh, used Google Maps to kind of map them out, uh, to make it a little bit more interactive, so you could kind of look at particular neighborhoods or, or zoning districts. Um, and I also included kind of those hold permit, um, or hold certificates, uh, just so you were kind of aware of what could be approved, um, and also a short-term rental unit. We also included kind of some further, um, uh, the city council recently conducted a, a, a community-wide survey and gathered some feedback for a strategic planning session that they conducted. And there was a number of comments related to short-term rentals that we thought was important to at least bring forward to the planning commission, so you were aware of that. And essentially, you know, from staff perspective, what we, we're seeing is that planning commission is set reviewing, you know, short-term rental regulations from zoning side of things as, uh, a priority for twenty twenty-three. And then as a result of the community survey, the, the city council established, you know, reviewing short-term rentals as a priority as well. Um, so we kind of looked at, you know, what was maybe the best way to, to form a, uh, potential committee? If, if the, the planning commission formed some sort of an ad hoc committee, there, you're going to be kind of limited in scope and as far as what you can look at, and just limiting it to, to zoning issues. With short-term rentals, depending on the priorities that are set, um, there's also the ability to kind of add, um, regulatory or police power, um, language into the, the city's code of ordinances, but you don't have that. Ability to do that, only the city council does. In fact, you know, obviously, uh, on the zoning side, the city council has to approve, um, any actual zoning changes, uh, anyway. And so we kind of took a look at, you know, what's, what's available, um, in your city charter, and, and there's a, you know, mechanism under the charter for the city council to establish an advisory committee. And, and that particular committee would have broader, um, latitude to look at, um, both the zoning side of things and potential regulatory or police powers. Uh, changes. So, uh, staff's recommendation is that, uh, uh, the planning commission and the, uh, city council kind of get together for a kind of a joint workshop. I think it's important for both bodies to kind of hear a little bit of a, a little bit of information regarding the legal landscape. Um, this has been frankly a tedious issue in other communities. Um, and then, you know, the city attorney's office can provide you with kind of a, a little bit more framework as far as options that you might have moving forward. And then both bodies could kind of discuss what the makeup of that, that committee would look like. Um, and then if everyone's agreeable to forming it under, um, section four point two eight of the charter. Um, then the city council has a boarding commission selection policy already in place that, you know, depending on who you believe, those positions that were best to be on this committee. We could use a selection process based on applications, interview folks, and then the mayor would ultimately, uh, make recommendations to council on who to appoint to that advisory committee, and then that, that community could kind of get off, so.
Thank you, Ryan. I think one question I guess I would have, and I know some of us already have discussion on it. I was listening to the workshop last night with the city council, and it definitely came across that timing was, was of, of an issue. And, you know, we've heard enough comments, we've seen things, you know, within. Your data, um, and in the current survey, to make me almost question whether or not we would even need a joint meeting to discuss it. Or could the planning commission just make the decision to propose a resolution to city council? For them to review at their, their next workshop in the, in February, uh, for actually starting the committee. Because I think, in my opinion, we're going to end up going towards wanting to at least have a committee that's going to reach out to the community. If a committee is, committee is formed, I'm thinking that might be the committee would want to kind of hear, you know, all the legal updates. And so instead of repeating it, you know, to us and then to council, uh, you know, can that be done, you know, just with, once the committee's in place? That's at least thoughts that I'm kind of right now thinking of any.
Yeah.
You're saying, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you're saying skip the joint meeting between council and planning commission?
Right, because I was thinking, just from listening to the council, um, and then our own, you know, comments and kind of how we would, other cities have tried to proceed. I was, was, was telling Russ and as he was the planning, was talking about the planning, um, com- commission last night on the council. You know, that we could actually instead of move to, um, if we made a decision of submitting a resolution for the city council to consider. And I've actually kind of written one up that we can talk about, you know, towards the end, at least give it its feedback on, that could be, you know, submitted for. The purpose of the ad hoc committee, given it a timeline, given it, you know, what's, what's within their priorities, and then a makeup of it. When, with, as opposed to maybe having a joint. I'm not opposed to having a joint, I just don't know if we have a joint meeting. That's going to then, before we can make a resolution, then it's going to be the next meeting, so that we have to have another planning meeting, then we make a resolution to get it to them. So when I was hearing the members kind of talk about wanting to try to move this as along, having a month delay and kind of just getting to the point of putting a committee together. I wasn't certain if that was really the best approach.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chairman Mans. Um, for those of you that didn't watch the workshop yesterday, um, and Chairman Mans was on the call as well as Ryan was there, and, and, um. So, this, this, this topic gets a lot of interest. So when you hear short-term rentals, there's a lot of, you can just see everybody's eyes open up. And yesterday's discussion, what I got, two things from it. One was that there is some sense of urgency. Um, that I've heard the term, don't kick the can down the road. Um, as a matter of fact, I've heard former council members have said, yeah, we literally kicked the can down the road on this because of the. The perceived difficulty in getting through it, which I don't perceive it to be that way. I think it's just a process we get, so in a thoughtful, transparent way. Um, and two is that I brought to the council yesterday, and there seemed to be general consensus around this, is to use section four, which is mentioned, that four dot two eight advisory committees or boards. And have a resolution drafted by the planning commission to present it to council at hopefully its first workshop meeting in February, which would be February eighth. And then council would then discuss that as a possible adoption at its, at thirteen. That could be that that workshop could be in theory a joint meeting, just be there just to hear the conversation. But that's going to get the ball rolling with the council to consider, here's what the planning commission brings, the role of this ad hoc task force, whatever you want to call it. Is going to be the duration, it's going to last, you know, how it's going to start, who we would recommend that would be selected for, not names, but people from the community that we think would be important for it. And Chairman Mans has already done some research on this. In my opinion, council seemed amenable to that approach. As a matter of fact, we're supportive of it. It's official of the charter. It's an approach we've used with other work groups in the city on ad hoc purposes. So that, that's, that's why we're.
Well, I think we're headed there anyways. It cuts a month and a half out of timelines. I think it's, I like the idea of attending the workshop to, uh, be able to voice our opinions from.
I would think exactly. If we called it a joint meeting, but separately, I guess the workshop is a public meeting. Supposedly following Monday, uh, because. I think that's definitely where we're going. I mean, there's, yeah, I sent also, also I sent Ryan a presentation, I think all of you would have received it, of something I sat through. Don't really have to kind of go through and rehash it, but one of the points that council was making, I know Russ was making to council is that. And I totally agree, and I think we all pretty much agree in here too, is that we're not really trying to re, we're not trying to create something and start fresh. This has been done hundreds of times across the country, and there's been many approaches, and we've actually seen some of the communities that have been able to streamline it because of following what other communities have done. And that's kind of what we would think the ad hoc committee would be trying to do when they're presenting back to us. But there is a company, Granicus, that did do a presentation that I know I was on, and CJ and Holly, I was part of, and I forwarded over the deck. Now, a couple of things that I, I thought was interesting that's in there is like on pages five and six on that deck, it did kind of talk about some of the priorities and issues that other cities have kind of seen, you know. Again, a guideline that we would kind of give to the ad hoc. The one thing that Ryan, I think you probably noticed, and I might have mentioned to you, is that they have said that they've been, they were able to identify three hundred eighty-seven unique properties. You know, within Sava Talk, and we have two hundred and forty-seven licenses. So if there's three hundred eighty-seven, that's a hundred and forty properties that have, that are operating in some capacity as short-term rentals. That we don't currently have licenses, you know, for. I realize the challenge of trying to identify those. Obviously, that's one of the services that they provide, that you, that they can help identify, but of course, it's like if you're hiring them from a municipality, and I'm not trying to speak on behalf. So it's definitely, we're not trying to speak on behalf of, you know, that organization, and I did, even I can my email, make sure everybody knew that. They were, were very clear with them that this was not a presentation, and that I had any authority whatsoever, you know, to be able to make a decision, you know, as to how we would proceed if we were a outside company. And, but I thought it was interesting that they were able to provide that three eighty-seven, and then the growth rate that they were shown was thirteen percent. You know, in some neighborhoods, I think it's dramatically higher, you know, year over year. They also was something that's interesting that the ad hoc committee, I think, could, you know, he's turned to. Is there's some, there's some pages in there that also go through, and they're consulting services that they have done with some communities. You know, as far as actually, you know, letting them kind of lead in some ways, you know, the ad hoc, which is. At least an idea that kind of, you kind of keep out there. So anyhow, if you get an opportunity, you can kind of flip through all that. There's a lot of the slides that are in there that really are just their sales presentation and some of their success stories and case studies, um, you know, where, where they were trying to use that. But I think it's that three eighty-seven number versus our two forty-seven, uh, that you start to kind of look at and just think, okay. What additional revenue could we have? what additional revenue could we have? But then also, you start getting in three, four, or five hundred. Then do we have the staff and personnel, you know, so that might be part of was it really the ad hoc as well as city council will look at as we as we move it forward, is whether we want something like that. Uh, but as a starting point, just for us to consider here tonight, I would just thought I would tell you, read to you, because I figured if we were to talk about maybe going forward with a resolution that we will submit to council, we have something that at least we can kind of have a discussion around. So I just, I drafted this with here up this afternoon, I just said, this would be considered as a resolution for the city council to establish a short term rental. Ad hoc committee in accordance with section four twenty of the city charter, the short term rental ad hoc committee will report to the planning commission with a purpose and priorities to identify and prioritize current short term rental concerns and issues held by the citizens of the city of Sabata. Conduct community forum and surveys regarding the short term rental issues and concerns. Determine if these concerns or issues are justified, and if so, determine if there's a need to revise or add current ordinance zoning, zoning changes and or fee adjustments relating to short term rentals. If it's determined as a need, then to review and discuss options and policies of similar resort focused communities that have previously taken actions. Lastly, to formulate recommendations and to forward to the planning commission for their review and discussion, any recommendations. The ad hoc committee will be voluntary and uncompensated budgeted amounts for surveys may be requested through the through the city council. The ad hoc committee will function for a duration not to exceed one year, although expectations are the engagement with the citizens, evaluation of concerns and forwarding of recommendations should be completed by September two thousand and twenty three. This ad hoc committee will consist of, this is only my suggestion, eleven members representing different factions of the community as described below. Selection of the committee members will follow the city council board of commission selection policy, all meeting. Meetings of the committee will comply with the open meetings act requirement, which includes providing public notice and gathering public comments. Committee makeup recommendation is one member from city council, two members from the planning commission, one member from the business owner community, whether it be a retail restaurant or lodging, one member from a property management who handles short term rentals, one member from a residential zone that has a short term rental license or is either positive on short term rentals, one member from a residential zone that either has a short term rental license or is positive on short term rentals, one member from a commercial zone that is not an owner of short short term rentals, one member of a residential zone that is not an owner of short term rentals, one member from the real estate community with a realtor with no short term rental ownership. And then lastly, a member of a or of one member who is an owner of a hotel or B and B. I don't know if that would be sufficient if we for like the type of resolution, or if we have to put more into it, but at least it was something that I thought we could kind of throw out as a discussion, let us see.
And I'll I'll let our city attorney correct me if I'm I'm wrong, or maybe speak to that, but I I I think that you have the ability to pass a a resolution, making a recommendation to the council to to form um such a committee. I mean, ultimately, it's up to the city council, you know, the mayor to bring forth something with, have those agreement for the charter, but um maybe our city attorney can speak to that.
Yes, Ryan, you're you're completely correct, and I'm Kyle Merrill of the city attorneys. Um, uh, the planning commission can make any recommendation it wants to to uh the city council.
Yes, and I think that, you know, I was just using this as a starting point, because again, I don't know if everybody hears something permission, you know, be able to, you know, eleven members, if they like that, they know type. Not that we're going to be the ones making the decision, but it would be our recommendation going to council. And so I think if we had a majority or unanimous, that that's kind of what how we viewed it, it would have a bearing with the city council.
You know what, and what I told council yesterday was that, from my perspective, as a council member, citizen, it's very important to have this be very transparent. Have it be led by people appropriate stakeholders, as has been listed in Chairman Man's list there. And more importantly is that there's public input, tremendous public input, uh, council seems to be a head of all of that. This is a community issue, it's in our laps and or now trying to, you know, figure out what the community wants. I have no idea what the community wants. I have my personal opinions, but that may not be what the community is looking for. And uh, if you look up short term rentals, task forces, whatever, just Google it. You'll have hundreds of things to come up, so we're behind the eight ball, and we're behind the curve on this. A lot of the community have have done this work already. So I think we can use some of that as a kind of a roadmap for us. But I'm also very concerned that I want to make sure that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves. We want to come up, in my opinion, with a solution that reflects Sogent's perspective, person that in our community's interests and needs, not what may be good for Palms, because California or the Tybee Island, Georgia, which actually has short term rentals, and they've got some really pretty progressive policies there, um, or Maine, or I mean, you name it. Um, I I really would like to see this reflect what's important to our and something also too that was brought up last night is um some urgency around this. Uh, one of the council members said, well, I'd really like to have something come back by spring, and I said, I don't think we're going to be able to meet that timeline. However, one of the first steps in this process, in my opinion, would be to begin to get input from and there may be some things that come out of that input that we can say, this is something that the city can immediately from an enforcement standpoint, for instance, or some things that the city could could move on without having to change zoning or anything of that nature. This may ultimately end up in no changes to our something on this. I I don't know, but there are some things that we might find out, and that seem to satisfy some of those concerns about urgency here that as this information comes back, assuming council agrees with this approach, that that information will be back to the appropriate city staff and the council for first some immediate things that you can do without having to do anything other than listen.
Yes, and I think, you know, in the, you know, whether we went with this mode, this type of resolution, number one priority was to identify and prioritize that current short term rental issues as heard from the citizens of the city of Sabata. It's that has got to be upfront first and foremost. And then to conduct those forums, you know, I I don't think we've we want to tell them how to do it, or city council will say, hey, this is how you do it, that's why you're putting the committee together, but once it's formed, you know, they will make the decision on, do they want to be via surveys, they want it to be through community, you know, forums. Um, we can kind of give them guidance, but that's what other cities have done. And, you know, and try to help them, you know, in bringing it forward, but then it's a determination. You know, if they determine that it's necessary, then they'll move forward with trying to figure out, okay, what changes would we make? But until we get there, just right now, every time we mention it, people keep saying, well, what are you going to do? And it's like, we don't even know yet if it's really necessary. We all might have a strong, you know, feeling, but we need to make certain we document it first, what the need is. And is it really, does it justify moving forward? And then you start looking at all the options for how do you move forward? So, um.
Chair, I, I devil's in the details, and I'm sorry, this is the very first time I'm hearing this resolution. Not sure others somehow heard of it, be otherwise.
No one has heard of it, because I literally finished it like at six thirty.
Cool. Um, I, back to the devil in the details, the the makeup of the um committee concerns me. Um, or are I, concerns is not the correct word. You've got a a city council member, two planning commissioners, the business owner. What was the next one? A property, I I was writing as fast as I could.
So the the rationale I was kind of thinking.
I'm out, let me do my global question first. Okay, and then we can go through specifics. Um, as a non short term rental owner, resident in an area surrounded by short term rentals, uh, I personally have a concern that the people like myself who you live here year round or have year round homes, um, and so uh are adequately represented on this ad hoc committee. And with your list, um, I'm not sure there's a guarantee that there's anything more than I think the one or two that you identified, the uh residential area, not owner, commercial not owner. Um, for example, the business owner may also, he may own a shop down here and also have a short term rental up above. The um, the uh realtor may have a short term rental. The two planning commission members that you that that are designated, one or both could be short term rental, city council, I know some other state council members. So I I am concerned that um of the eleven, uh, you could end up with a minimum of of two people who represent those of us in the community who don't own or have a a financial interest in the short term rental. And so um, and maybe that, maybe I'm just missing it, but but um that is a concern of mine.
But the, and then let me first address this, please, Holly. Um, when it came to try to think of the makeup, I tried to pick three community individuals that would be short term rental and then three community that are not. So the, you have the commercial zone who has a short term rental, and I think the reason I was trying to think of commercial versus residential, is I think we would all agree the short term rentals that are down within the commercial zone probably have a totally different feel and maybe even have you know, some different priorities and issues than those within the residential. Um, so the, so there was two of those, and then a property manager, I do think it's important that we have somebody who represents a a property manager, because they have different views, probably managing for short term rentals. Uh, because many of them have even good ideas as to how they handle their short term rentals, as you know, as far as the when a client is coming in, you know, do they have to check in, do they have to provide additional information? They they'd be a good resource for the for the committee.
I I I believe that was those.
I'll check real quick on that. I believe, once I can think of here in town, also own short term rentals.
Right.
I don't think there's.
But I counted them as a person within the short term rental. So you've got a short term rental, within somebody who owns short term rentals in the commercial, somebody owns short term rentals in the residential, and then a property manager. They could or could not own short term rental, but they're involved with the short term rental management. Then in the non, it's a member from the residential zones that does not have short term rental.
Right.
A member from the commercial zones that does not have short term rental. The realtor did not have short term rental.
Ah, okay.
They needed to fall on the non side of it, so they, in my opinion, would give more of a kind of an honest, open type type of review. And then the business owner, you're correct, they could, I guess, end up having um a short term rental. It was more thinking, okay, with who are the two industries in town? So you've got the retail type of businesses, whether it's retail or restaurants, and then you've got the lodging side. So it was like trying to bring in those two community groups. You know, and so it's during the interviews, I guess the one thing that I was thinking we just was trying to identify was the different community groups, the sectors of it. Then knowing that the selection process would be similar to what we've done for other committees, they would have to submit, you know, we should have some type of an application um or a letter of interest, and then in that, they would have to stipulate, you know, if they are an owner of short term rental. And then when we're making the decision on putting the group together, if you had two applicants in one of the categories, like the business owner or the lodging, that also was short term rental, and you thought that was going to make it an uneven situation, you know, then you could try to go with an organic, so it could be something that could be considered in the selection process. But it was really trying, and then same thing with the, and the reason I came up with two planning was we wanted to have it as an odd number and not really have a ten person committee. So it was either nine or ten. And plus, I actually think that this could end up being a lot of additional times. So I thought, well, having two people, just in case somebody couldn't be there, uh, would always be beneficial on the planning side.
I I personally.
One of my thoughts.
Uh, yeah, and I personally, it's just me personally, I don't care if it's six, five short term rental owners to none. I would be concerned if it were nine to two.
Absolutely.
That's my concern is is um uh um, and I I like your breakout. I think, for example, the hotel in Bed and Brooklyn, I'd say absolutely, I think, want to have uh, a seat in it, a say.
And again, if we say eleven and we don't have any, I don't think it's going to occur. But if you didn't have any business or a lodging candidate, you'll step forward, who want to be on the committee. You know, I guess that would then you need to fill with a different uh, you know, individual, or you can change the committee makeup. I doubt if that would be a term, but.
Mark said that, that I agreed with, and I just want to be sure. Well, I think getting somebody who's not in short term. That too, I think it would be.
Absolutely. And I think that the one thing that whether it was going with something like this or whatever, we're going to recommend is I was really trying to make certain that we it's it's written up to where it's evenly distributed.
Absolutely.
So that no one looks and says, oh, well, they put nine people on the committee that are a ton of percent against, you know, short term rentals. They want to make it as restrictive as possible, because I think we need people who, even the ones who don't have short term rentals, they need to really come onto the committee and, Russ has said many times, and I'm going to keep saying, first, understand what the issues and what the priorities are. And then how does it affect the overall community? Because all of us who are involved and so we we see the community many times differently than the average person who's out on this in the in these neighborhoods. And you have to kind of look at everything from the standpoint of how does it affect the business? You know, do, you know, we need to have short term rentals, you know, within the community. You know, it's it's, we are a tourist, basically, resort town. You know, so that's where you know, the who's ever on the committee needs to have the ability to kind of listen to all sides, and that's why I want to see that it's somewhat balanced. All of us are sure.
Back in May of last year, we had a a resident that lived up on the hill near the high school, who, um, I don't think Brian or Sarah were here yet, but uh, he came and spoke to the council and public comment before meeting and and um his comments really struck me because he lived on a block where he, and actually went up and visited with him after the meeting, and just introduced myself and talked with him. But to your point, uh, Mr. LaChe, his concern was my block has been taken over by short term rentals. And I'm seeing a lack of enforcement, but I'm seeing more of a loss in the neighborhood, and that concerns him greatly. And he's still living there. And it hasn't gotten better. His one, if you look at his block on here, it's it, his block is pretty much taken over by short term rentals. So there's people like that in the community that I think are an important voice to put on the table to be heard. Um, I I can imagine that he would probably be willing to serve on this, to be that voice for someone who's really been impacted by it. And he wasn't against short term rentals, he just said, and my block has become a problem. And there's some things that I think we should do.
Yeah, I agree. And so it sounds like maybe just going to what what we might recommend, maybe we would have wording about sufficiency of those kinds of individuals, because I do think, I hear what you're saying, Steve, about the, you know, we'd have a business owner, for instance, who doesn't own a short term rental. Um, but they might not live in our community, might live in the township or or Douglas, so I think it would be good to have the that voice.
But the business owner would have to, like, just wouldn't have to live in here, but hopefully it would be, they would live in the city if they're going to serve on.
Yeah, that might be something that the council would probably be concerned about is um, the goal is to always have residents.
Right, yeah.
That's all.
Okay, that's just assumed.
Sometimes that's
That's a good point.
It's sometimes difficult to do. Uh, my mom bought and worked with an example, we had uh, four city residents on it, but three of them that were on the committee were not, because they were they were experts in what we were trying to do, but they didn't live in the city, and the and and the city council didn't have an issue with that. Um, so, but in this case, I think there might be more of a concern about having city residents on this task force. Again, I speak this for myself here at this point, but that might be something that.
I I guess the only thing I said, I had to add to the resolution that it was would be our advice and and request that you process that um uh equanimity of of short term rental owners versus others who are not um be strongly considered in the selection of in the selection of the of the um community members.
To, you know, to the extent we can discern that, uh, people who are solutions for anything and recognize that one solution is going to be ideal for probably anyone personally, um, and so people who are.
Yeah, I think that would be more of get ready to put the application or the nervous out for what we're looking for on the committee. You know, you would have kind of a resolution, but then listing which type of person.
Right.
It wouldn't go with the resolution, but it would kind of go in. You know, that's just what we would think would be some of the criteria.
And to that point, I had some conversations yesterday after the workshop with a couple of council members and actually came up during the workshop, like while it's that. And I'm sure you've seen this too, is that people start jumping right to a solution and way. Too far, we don't even have a problem clearly identified. To the point that Chairman Nance is making, let's, let's really work first thing, getting the problem identified. Because then the solutions will start to reveal themselves, but because I, I'm sure we're going to hear it. People are going to say, well, then we should be doing exactly like Palm Springs, California did. We should be doing exactly like name the place, Grand.
New Buffalo, Traverse.
Whatever. All of them have done their own thing, our township, which completely eliminated these. That's one solution, but all I'm saying is that we need to identify the problem first and some short-term solutions will reveal themselves and the longer time, longer solution will begin to be.
And as part of the committee is one of the other thing that we can always kind of keep in mind is again, we got to first identify what the priorities are. But, you know, whether it's an ordinance, but it could also be zoning. You know, changes, the one thing that we have noted, and if you go through and you look, one, I think as a committee, we've all discussed, do we really need 21 different zones in the city of Snoggetuck? And so that is one of our projects is to kind of talk about should those be consolidated? But within every one of the ones that allows residential, one of the uses that's listed is short-term rental. And there's not, that's all it says is short-term rental. There's nothing to prohibit this committee or even us at some point of, you know, making recommendations to council to put conditions on short-term rentals within each zone. You know, some cities, many of the cities who have actually adopted policies have adopted them across the board. And it's a part, you know, where they said nothing, or there's other ones like Palm Springs recently just said no more than 20, 20% in any neighborhood. And they identified neighborhoods, but we may look at and say, well, the, some committee could say the commercial district, because they literally are downtown with the businesses. You know, they, the conditions for their short-term rentals could be 40%. But then you could have conditions for short-term rentals and something like Peninsula West, which really is truly residential, because there's no businesses located within it. You know, maybe that one is, you know, 20 or even less. So you could, that's another approach that could be made is just to have conditions within each zone as to what's allowed for the short-term rental.
And to, and to bring up the point about, we don't even know what the problems are. Uh, you could flip it around and say that in a commercial zone, it may only be actually 10% because of parking problems. So, I mean, for us to arbitrarily start putting any kind of parameters on anything, I think is is premature.
Absolutely.
And I know you were just giving.
I just.
I'm just flipping it around for discussion sake. Uh, I know you weren't proposing anything.
So I, I am a short-term rental owner, so it's, uh, in living the sound. Um, it's perspective, absolutely. It's whether, what is your perspective from that location? Is it noise? Is it the transient community? Is it the city wants more revenue? What is, what is the problem or the plan of these types of changes?
But we believe that it's really important that we identify what the problem is. And one problem.
But.
City of this community. So a little egg will agree with the majority. I'm always a little, um, for something like this, I'm just, when I can't read it for myself in terms of the resolution, it makes me a little, um, anxious in terms of what I'm signing up to. Um, so, but if that's impossible and we need a decision tonight, I would ask that in a more intentional speed. Um, and secondly, uh, to go back to me. Really need to make sure that we understand what the problem is. And then how software, um, that's the, that's the second thing. The fifth thing is uh, based on everything we say, um, we are part of a tri-community. And what we do like that was in township and what they do affects us. So at the very least, I would be interested in knowing what our plan and council's plan is. You, uh, keep both entities or jurisdictions informed. Uh, because I believe they, especially Douglas, it's also really the same types of issue. So there's that. And thirdly, um, I'll work, I am, um, will we and the committee have access to, uh, consultant advice? Um, who, I'm not, I mean, I'm always interested in what's happening across the country. But I'm more interested in what's happened in Michigan on this issue and reserve communities, because that's where people will. Um, so not that we have to model any of them, because we're different, but before the argument comes up, I'd just like Russ to know, um, the facts.
Yeah. Also, I, I can speak to a lot of those points. Like they're, they're good points. Uh, one, we can get real high tech and perhaps Sarah could scan that document and she can pull it up and put it on the screen if you.
And I realized there's some typos in it. Cause I didn't know if we were going to try to, you know, tonight, make a resolution to try to like, put it all together and try to do it on.
Totally up to you.
At least we haven't started.
Just offering that, uh, to your point about, uh, information related to the, uh, tri-communities, I, I will, uh, the planning commission knows. So this was formed prior to my time, but the fire authority kind of took the lead on trying to.
Could you make Xeroxes of that also for us? Is that possible? Thank you. I'm sorry. And I will apologize. My printer is almost out of ink, cause you're going to be able to see it. It's got margins on it.
Perfect storm. But the fire authorities kind of pulled together the, the tri-communities and, 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 um, just to look at it from, uh, uh, kind of a inspections enforcement standpoint to say, how can we standardize things across all three that everybody's getting the same kind of fire inspection? Um, you know, can we streamline forms or applications so that there's similarities? Because there's a lot of these businesses that are working with all three communities, you know, should there be uniformity as far as, regulations? I mean, those are all higher level decisions, you know, beyond staff, but, um, so, and, and actually the, the fire authority just reached out to kind of have another one of those meetings just to see how things are going. And so, so you know that that's, that work is out there, uh, as well. Um, and I've discussed with the city manager that, that there may be, you know, depending on the formation of that hot committee and what, uh, the priorities are and what, what, what they're looking to, uh, to work on. Um, that, that certainly we can look at, um, professional planners or others that we need to bring in on at different times, depending on the nature of the meeting and what's being discussed. So the provision of the resolution, which we'll be seeing momentarily about authorizing, um, costs related to surveys might also add costs related to consulting.
Yeah. And, 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 um, back during the budgeting process, we actually insert, we, I think we dropped $25,000 into line item for consulting support for the planning conditions. So already been budgeted for that.
Surveyor.
And in terms of the resolution itself and, and, and I'll defer to, to the open meeting, um, open meeting experts. Um, I'm used to just being able to shop a document around and just give feedback on it, right? And just kind of manipulate it, right? And get it ready for, for publication essentially. Um, but I'm respectful of the fact that we have to operate as an open, we're open to meeting situation. Is there a way for us to kind of develop, you know, create a draft and then share that amongst the the commission members without funding the meeting and get feedback on it individually? Is that possible? And again, maybe we're being a little bit too aggressive on the timeline. I have, this has to be done in the right way. But the body's points to make sure everybody's got a chance to have feedback, Mr. Shade too, you know, make sure we can all get on board with what this resolution, that's recommended to council from formation, maybe actually says.
Question in that regard. Our resolution is just, doesn't do anything, does not form the ad hoc committee, is a resolution recommending to the city.
Council will then look at it and they may say, we like this part, we're going to take this part out.
I'm much more comfortable moving on a resolution in a, in a.
It's basically.
Easy, not, not, it's a hazy, a recommend, since it's just a recommendation. Um, you know, I heard what you said and every word was in English and I, I understood, I understood almost all of them and, uh.
I did too, actually, but.
Oh, no, 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 but I'm with you a hundred percent. And I like having in print.
No, I do too.
So, um.
And I wanted to, I didn't have a copy. I didn't have a chance. And I just wanted to have something in writing that we could use as a story.
Oh, yeah.
Because something that, that's this long, it's kind of like created while we were here.
No, and I think it's, it helps frame the discussion to have something to start with.
And there's actually a format that has been used as for resolutions for city council. And, um, I drafted one to the, uh, fallen head work group and council to its credit didn't change the word. After this, we do this right.
I just.
Okay, that's exactly how it should work as well. So I get back to my question without staying here until all hours of the night, getting a document that everybody can agree with, the way that we can maybe do this outside of the meeting, that would be, uh, wouldn't be in violation of both meeting act provisions or.
Yeah, not amongst yourselves. And I'll, I'll defer to the, this is the attorney. I mean, I think it'll, um, you know, there's individual feedback that you're providing to staff and staff's working on an updated version for you for your next meeting. I think that there's probably some allowance for that, but I'll, I'll probably defer to make sure that we're.
Answers no, let's just work through.
Yes, I, I, I agree with, uh, Brian. The, uh, the process I would suggest is if you wanted to get this into what I would call a final form that you feel more comfortable with adopting, uh, what I would do is I would have everybody have copies, which it looks like, and then give input to Brian and then at a subsequent meeting, adopt the resolution. But.
We could actually, I think, if everybody's comfortable with it, I think we can just knock it out in a few minutes. Famous last words.
I think.
Yeah, I mean.
It, it, my only concern and I, I'm, it, it's not an agenda, it was not an agenda item and I would hate to have this. It's a, it's kind of related to the agenda item C. Um, but, but the, the submission and passing a resolution wasn't on the agenda and I would hate to have anyone in this town who might be prone to being litigious or otherwise, um, saying that they didn't have sufficient notice to zoom in and, and, uh, give us their two cents worth on what color the sky is or something.
Yeah.
I guess, but my gut is, let's move on it. I mean, that's my gut.
Because it's, you know, part of it, I, I think, yes, we need to give them the opportunity as we're trying to make our recommendation to council. Council will be the one that will be reviewing it at the workshop and then voting on it within their meeting. So, you know, so there will be the opportunity for people to see whatever is being proposed to council, but.
Gotcha.
I'm not, but at the same time, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from too. And open to what everyone else is thinking as far as, you know, yes, when you do look at it, it says review of short-term rental data and discussion of holding, you know, a joint meeting, but doesn't say discussion on potential resolution uh, to council.
So looking at the calendar here, it's in February, the council will meet on the 13th and 27th. We next meet on the 16th.
That's correct.
So, yeah, but so maybe what we do is, um, we get this draft together, we get the feedback to the city staff in terms of what, what Chairman Nance has presented to the city, and then we can put that into a format that actually is utilized for council. And then the discussion regarding the final draft of this resolution will be at a meeting on the 16th. Then get it into the hands of council.
Twenty seven.
Twenty second. And that's potential adoption on the 27th. And I know there's some people that may say, well, why wait so long? Well, we've got some laws. Make sure that we're, we're not putting anybody at risk here.
Well, I mean, totally up to you. You do have your city attorney that, that could probably, uh, give you his advice on whether or not you could approve such a resolution today or not. That's okay, Mr. Chair.
So, um, your two options, one, the, the one thing I do not have a copy of is the planning commission bylaws. And sometimes that does specify what actions you can take that are on the agenda. Um, from under the Michigan Planning and Dealing Act, yes, the planning commission can freely amend its agenda. It can freely pass motions. It can freely pass resolutions in any format. Uh, that would be the only thing to look at. Um, in terms of if you want to get to a final copy, uh, that, that's really the, the only process is really all of Thanksgiving individual comments to city staff.
It probably is probably public. The best to have it, the transparency to have it drafted, have it in the packet as a agenda item on our next meeting.
Yeah, especially when you have a, it seems like a tradition of putting all materials considered by the boards and commission or councils of, uh, the city in packets.
Present an alternative to you that the, the planning commission could, uh, you know, request the, the, uh, the joint, um, you know, workshop with the city council, given that you get discussed, you know, your thoughts on what things should look like, and you could bring that discussion to the city council directly with, during a conversation. Um, perhaps sooner, um, you do have an option to, to schedule special meetings as well, um.
I like that option. I like something that doesn't push it to the end of February. I just think it's, it's continuing. There's also commentary around community, just don't push it down the road. So if there's an opportunity to make that February, early February.
February eighth is their earlier workshop. Uh, which, yes, not thinking about the agenda side, which I guess I should have. Uh, so thank you for those who brought it up. The you know, the intent here was to try to get something that we could possibly look at, that we could send forward, but.
A special meeting with this one subject?
I'm all for that.
I'm. And that would be up to the group. I will have to personally say, I leave tomorrow morning at eight AM and I am back on February 5th. So the special meeting would be amongst those who are able to participate, but I am not.
I'm just looking at the city council dates too. So is it the dates on the website? There's a January, I guess the difference is we get this done quickly. They can start looking at it on January 23rd as opposed to mid or late February.
We've had our final.
That's actually January. Okay, that's the meeting, sort of workshop type of things. We're talking about getting to the workshop.
Enjoy a workshop.
So the workshop took.
I see. I see. So this is the 13th is the next workshop.
February 8th is the workshop.
Workshop. I got it.
February 22nd.
I see.
Twenty seventh.
I see. Okay. Oh, I see. So it would be.
So if we had a, if there was a special meeting to approve it, it could go before the workshop on February 8th, without a special need to go for the workshop on February 27th.
Yeah. Okay.
So they generally like to pack it out for the workshops. So looking at the calendar, that Monday would be the sixth of February, we would just be returning and probably this is the last thing.
I have no issue with it.
But you could do it on the, uh, that previous week. So that would be like the second.
February.
Yeah. Yeah, have a special meeting just. Yeah. And I got a copy of the resolution that I offered for the hop on their work group, which is in formats, which is kind of the starting point for this. Um, and then, and then, and then now get a draft of this out to the, from the city staff, to the nation members with the microtransaction. Then give feedback directly to the city staff and have them manage the resolution and. Draft, which we discuss it, meeting, special meeting on the second.
But yes, well, yeah.
We have a quorum available.
Not be able to make it.
No. February 2nd, the historic district commission meets. So, um, depending on the time of your meeting, there may conflict with that. Six.
We may.
Yes.
Yes.
On second.
I could probably.
Yeah.
Stephen, I could probably figure it out.
Seconds of wisdom.
Okay, Sarah, enough time to just stop that. An hour, in an hour, I hope.
I, I would think, oh, I, I pray so, yes.
I would think so.
Especially if people had a chance to give, but then it's really review. Any questions?
You call it and then.
Oh, right, yes.
The second five.
So there will be five O's on the second. Should be six. We would need all five.
It should be six of them.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed, I thought you also.
I think I'm the only ones.
Oh, I, I, I thought I heard Russ say he wouldn't be able to make it either, I understood.
I should be able to make that.
Okay, great.
So for your knowledge, we have to have, I mean, your bylaws say we have to have like this notice out five business days ahead of. The, um, the meeting, so, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, you have feedback, you know, by mid next week kind of a thing.
It'd be part of the notice, right?
Right. I mean, that's, I think your intent that you want community to be able to see it and be able to digest it and provide feedback. Now, this is five days, it doesn't say business. Friday, but still.
Based on the council. Maybe we should have something we can discuss. This, we can't just send this.
To amend the agenda.
Okay, so that's the decision on. We come to the resolution as special meeting. February second. Five PM.
And I'm, I am looking at my phone to pull up the documents, so. So I cannot find the original Word document, but I actually dropped it.
Then the resolution would be five days before to go out. February eighth is the workshop.
Okay, so we need to get our comments to Ryan by February twenty-seventh.
Ideally by, probably the twenty-sixth, cause I'll probably finalize it on the twenty-seventh and then Sarah time to get it out, so. If possible, I mean, if there's something last minute on that Friday, we'll work with.
Good to know.
Sure, Lashay, I'll see him on probably Friday morning, right? I'll see that feedback on the twenty-seventh at noon.
Any other discussion regarding the short-term rental that's on the agenda? That's complete. The next item of business, new business was a two thousand twenty-three meeting schedule and discussion on start times. Ryan has included the meeting dates, which is just our standard in our packet. It'll be third Thursday. Currently it's at seven o'clock. Some of you might have seen there was a survey that went out by city council, by the city. On behalf of the city council, asking if the citizens wanted to have a meeting stay at seven o'clock. Or even consider it more appropriate at six or six, or six-thirty was the options that they gave them. Has there been any tally of those responses? Barely split, wasn't it? That's what last night, when Jamie told me, she said it was pretty, pretty even. Um, so we were just wondering as committee members. Do we want to keep it at seven? I think one of the considerations was the city staff many times has to stay there during those two hours waiting. And then you run in. Later, so the idea was, do we want to have an earlier start time? But then not knowing everyone's schedule and whether or not they're working and can you be here? And we do need to have five people, you know, each time, so that's sort of a consideration. Um, you know, so thoughts regarding the start time.
Yeah, for, well, and council basically took the response survey or took the survey response. So it's status quo. And for me personally, um, getting to a meeting at seven o'clock works, getting a meeting at six to four.
In, in the winter, in the winter, I see this, it could be changed, but summertime is going to get so busy, so getting it at seven is a, is better for me. So I like the time that's there.
I would say that we leave it at seven o'clock, status quo, no change, understood? And the last thing on the new business was the training opportunities that is offered by the Michigan State University on the citizen planner program. Uh, Ryan just want to fill them in on how we would approach that for anyone who is interested in that additional training.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I, I think some of you, uh, well, all of you have requested training opportunities. Um, and the MSU extension has a called a citizen planner, um, program that kind of, uh, takes you through, um, sample cases. Called Spartyville, so it's a sample community and, and kind of walks you through, you know, master planning and attending, um. You know, planning commission meetings and different issues that may come up and so, um. They're offering this, uh, you know, they have in-person sessions again, but they also have this in an online format that you can take at your leisure, at your own pace. Um, some, some of the modules have a lot of extra documents that you can kind of dive into, especially if you're interested in one particular issue over another. Um, so I've talked with the city manager, um, he's fully in support of, uh, you know, supporting training with the planning commission. And, uh, and Kate said that we have the, the budgeted items to, to pay for this, so. Um, anybody that's interested in the program, um, can let me know, um, and then I will work with you to, um, create an accounts. And then create another accounts and, uh, get this, uh, paid for as well, but we can get you set up. And then you'd be able to take the course, um, as you'd like. And then if you take the, the citizen planner program, there's future opportunities where you can actually do like master citizen planner programming through MSU extension. They have, uh, and then you are also given access to a ton of resources that they have as well, so. Um, if you're interested, shoot me an email, kind of gather who's interested and then kind of work on getting you collectively, um, signed up.
Is there something online we could look at and see what, how much is involved and, and whether it be beneficial to each of us?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
What website or something we can look at before we email you or email you first and you send us the website?
It's a good idea. I'll send out to all of you the, the website that has further information and has kind of like an intro video to kind of show you what it looks like.
Cause I've been through it, I think, um. You know, it was one of the things that we were kind of during the, the selection process was kind of encouraging everybody to go through, it's not a requirement. Uh, but I will tell you that it doesn't take a lot of, it's, it's, do you remember, I think it's six classes. And they're all online.
Three hours.
And they're three hours each time. You know, it's, so it's a, it's a commitment, but you do kind of walk away. If, if you spend the time upfront. I think preparing for it, if you walk in and just plan and go through the slides and not, and look at it first. You probably don't get as much out of it, but if you've actually taken the time to kind of read through it in advance. Uh, there's a couple of the sessions that, you know, had more to do with the zoning, which would probably fall more into like the ZBA and that. But they really do kind of get into the benefits of a master plan and what's involved with a master plan, especially knowing that our whole tri-community wants to be coming up. Uh, you know, site plan reviews, a lot of things that we are doing, you know, they go through, plus they walk you through. Educate you on like the Enabling Act, the Pro meetings act, you know, what, what, what's your role as a commissioner, you know, it's a. You know, I think one of the first things is like, what did I get myself into is one of the first questions, I'm sure you could, you two are probably ask yourself that now, as many of us do sometimes. But I would encourage it.
I, in fact, I, um, felt that I just become a commissioner and took it and was. I'd actually like to do a replay out of all of it, but of certain sections. Because I, but that I'm just. Absorb all of it. I would, but I found it fascinating. I, I really enjoyed it, but.
And I would have to say that. Like you, Bobby, that I've almost felt like many times the same way. I took it within the first month. After, you know, joining, now being, you know, on the condition for the last two years, there's a new appreciation. And I have the book at home and there's times where I'll still kind of flip back and kind of, oh, I remember, I remember they talked about this, you know, and you'll kind of look back at it. Um, especially a meeting we had, we were doing all the amendments to a motion. And there's a whole section in one of the, uh, one of the evenings was on making motions and amended motions. And I was going, I was looking at that, trying to figure out, okay, what was that, you know, it's, it's. I would almost be willing to sit through the whole thing again, but I'd rather just do one or two.
I remember, I mean, it's like the one thing. If regardless of how you feel personally. It implies with the zoning ordinance.
Exactly.
Um, so. It's really, it's really, it was really good.
And I would encourage, and the fact that it's now online, I think years ago, I understood that they actually had to go to an actual class. So that would be more time away, but with it being online and being in the evening at six to nine o'clock.
Remember it well.
You know, it's, uh.
But I worthwhile.
Right, right, very worthwhile. Very good. So we'll get those over to Ryan, those who are interested. Moving on to item seven is communication. The report on the planning commission activity, uh, thank you, Ryan, for kind of putting it together. Everybody has that within their packet and it's just going to list out the activities that we had for twenty-twenty-two. I don't know if you have any comments on that, but.
Unless there's questions, uh, I, I kind of follow the same format that you use in prior years, look like there's some kind of ongoing data, just so you could kind of compare. And then, uh, we'll take this report, uh, to the city council as well, to let them know, um, kind of meet that requirement.
And then the zoning administrator casebook report is in here and once again, Ryan, I just, I think this is. I love this every, every time, I, you know, reading through it. Just interesting to kind of see what's going on within the town that we are aware of. It's also interesting to see how many short-term rental applications were in here. Not to beat that subject anymore, but it was just, uh.
Do they renew every year?
Every three years, um, unless there's new ownership, then they would make them sooner.
So. And with that.
Yes.
But that will move to item A, which is report of officers and committees. Anything else you wanted to relay from?
No, just, I relay what we discussed yesterday as city council and, um, I think they're going to be very appreciative of our urgency. Sense of urgency around this as well as the approach being taken.
You know, committees that you're aware of, Ryan, and affect us, you know, out of this thing. At this time, we will reopen for public comments. Uh, this can be on any item. If anyone would like to address us that are online, just please raise your hand or let us. See that you're out there and wish to speak and just keep the comments to three minutes. And when you open up, if you are going to speak, just give us your name and your address. See, no one raising their hand, we will then close that public comments. And at this time, I will ask if we have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Very good.
Thank you.
One question, Ryan. Two things.